Regular meeting number forty-six will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Brian Williams of New, I'm sorry, of Hope City House of Prayer. Pastor? Welcome to council, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you today on behalf of this city. And Lord, we know that there are many who seek answers, and so we seek you for wisdom. Or we confess that we can do nothing apart from you, and so, Lord, we ask that your presence, your wisdom, your peace would fill this council. Lord, that you would bless all those in those elected positions and appointed positions with the knowledge of God. That, Lord, you give us a heart of compassion for the members of this city who live, Lord God, in the gutters and who live in deplorable conditions. May they be remembered tonight. Give us compassion. Lord, I pray also that you give us humility to serve the people of this great city. And, Lord, that you teach us, Lord, even through our trials as a city, to trust you and to lean not on our own understanding. So, Lord, tonight, we thank you for the great city of Columbus. We thank you that the example that's set here in this city will be a beacon of hope and light to the United States of America, and that all will see that truly, Lord, you've blessed us indeed. All these things, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Denziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Denziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda. They'll be published in the city bulletin. City clerk, are there any other communications you run the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Before we get to resolutions, member of council, I know that there's a lot of questions surrounding the tragic shooting that happened last week with Mr. King. And I know that Safety Chair Brown is going to ask Director Pettis for an update, so I just wanted to let the community know that that will be coming before we start with the resolution portion of the agenda. So, resolution comments, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to invite Director Jennifer Fish of the Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District up, and she has with her David Donifrio, Board Supervisor and Treasurer, and other guests. I am presenting a resolution to recognize Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District on their 70th anniversary, which is fantastic. We partner with the Franklin and Soil-Water Conservation District on a lot of programs here in Columbus through the Environment Committee and through all parts of the city. We partner on Green Spot Backyards, Branch Out Columbus. You're a member of the Green Team, and it is fantastic that you have been around doing good work in our community for 70 years. So, I would like to present Resolution 0219X-2016 to recognize Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District on their 70th anniversary. Before we turn it over to Director Fish, are there any questions for my colleagues? I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Denziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Director Fish?
Thank you very much. We appreciate that recognition. Some of you may not be aware that the Soil and Water Conservation Districts arose, came to be in part or large part due to the Dust Bowl in the 1930s. So, just as today, we're worried about our natural resources and conserving those resources, back then, they had serious concerns about losing all their topsoil to wind and erosion during a drought period. So, today, we are focused on stormwater and water quality. We work with residents, businesses, organizations, local governments, to do whatever we can protect water quality in Franklin County. And we also do everything from working in the schools to holding conservation easements. We are one of the most mapped counties in the nation as far as information in GIS and data, and City of Columbus uses that data for many different projects. And then, we also do work with some communities on development plan reviews and construction site inspections, and we also work with City Columbus on special projects to demonstrate stormwater. I did want to make a plug for two programs that any Columbus resident can take advantage of, and they'll be open, I believe, through the end of October. And the one of them is for our lawn care, so if you want good tips on how you can manage your lawn and also benefit water quality, you can go to GetGrassy.org, and if you take a pledge, you can get either a free rain gauge or a soil kit. And that is something we do with Department of Public Utilities. And then, also, anybody in City Columbus is eligible if they participate in our Green Spot Backyards program with City of Columbus to get a $50 rebate on a compost bin, a rain barrel, or need a plants if they participate in that program. So, there's a lot of different ways to get involved with Franklin Soil and Water. There's a lot of different ways to get involved in protecting our water quality. If you want to learn more, go to our website, www.franklinswcd.org. Thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to see if David Donifrio, Board Member, has any.
Sure. Just, I wanted to also thank you so much, Councilmember Brown, and all of the members of council for your recognition tonight. It really means a lot. And I just wanted to just add along with that, the Board Supervisors are five publicly-elected members who are here to help serve the public. And so, if you, anyone listening tonight, anyone watching tonight, is interested in any of these programs or has any questions about ways that we can be helpful, we are here as a resource for you at any time. And also, I want to introduce our Assistant Director, Josh Garver.
Very briefly, but this was a very welcome surprise, and we greatly appreciate what you guys have done. As Jennifer alluded to, a lot of our work has to do with partnerships, and Columbus has been good, and we look forward to many more years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'd like to invite President Gary Baker of the School Board up, along with the School Board members he has with him. I am presenting Resolution 0218X-2016 to endorse Issue 57 and to express continued support for Columbus City Schools. This issue is our school levy that's on the ballot this year, and I will let our many capable folks here explain the importance, but I will say from a council perspective that the work our schools do and everyone involved, from teachers to janitors to maintenance workers to administrators, the work they do on a daily basis, the work you all do as elected members of the School Board, is truly securing the future of our city. For that, I'm incredibly grateful. This council is grateful. And when I think about things that we can invest in for economic development, return on the investment, education, there's nothing better than education. So, thank you for being here today, and I will first let you talk, President Baker, and then, actually, if there are questions, we can entertain them.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Mr. President, council members, let me begin by introducing my colleagues who are here with me this evening. I have Vice President Michael Cole here to my left, Board Member Dominic Coretti to his left, to my immediate right, Board Member Ramona Reyes, and then, Mary Jo Hudson to her right. So, I would like to thank you for the resolution that you plan to present to us this evening related to Issue 57, and I'm thanking you on behalf of the 51,000 students who attend our schools and their families, our teachers, support staff, administration, the superintendent, and all members of the Columbus Board of Education. As we'll discuss in your resolution, Columbus City Schools is focused on student success every single day. This focus on success can be seen throughout our school system, and whether it's the bus drivers who make sure our students arrive safely at school in the morning or back home, the maintenance staff who keep our schools safe and dry, classroom teachers and aides who point our children towards a brighter life, to a better education in the classroom, or food service workers who provide breakfast and lunch to our students, or any of the many other employees we have. As an example, evidence of our focus on success is found in dramatic improvement in the rates of students who are meeting the third-grade guarantee. Three years ago, only 42% of our students were passing that test. For the past two years, we've raised that rate to 91% who are now advancing to the fourth grade, as an example. How Issue 57 will help? Issue 57 will build upon our spirit of success. It will add 290 new teachers, aides, social workers, nurses, and staff who will work with our children directly every day. Roughly 80% of our students come from economically disadvantaged circumstances. 30% of our kids move during the course of the school year. 12% of our students experience homelessness during the school year. 17% have IEPs based upon their special needs. 15% of our students don't speak English as their native language. Many come to us not speaking any English at all. In addition, $125 million in bonding authority will allow us to make our buildings safer and dry by repairing or replacing the following: 31 failed or leaking roofs, 45 failing heating and air conditioning units, 64 school security systems, 34 outmoded electrical systems, 34 fire alarm systems, 64 lighting systems, 60 old plumbing systems, hot water tanks and pipes, 57 parking lots, playgrounds, sidewalks, stairways, 100 of our buses that are 15 years old or older. There will also be a permanent improvement fund that will allow us to remain caught up once we catch up on our deferred maintenance. With your and voters' support, this November, Issue 57 will help our community by better preparing our children for college and for good jobs right out of high school. Issue 57 will help us continue to be your partner in strengthening our community. And I want to, again, thank you on behalf of the Board, our employees, the Superintendent, for providing this resolution this evening.
Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Baker, you made reference to the fact, you said there are 12% are homeless. Could you give me approximately what that number really reflects?
So, we have 51, approximately 51,000 students in our district. So, approximately 5,000 or 6,000 of those students during the course of the school year will experience homelessness, and that means they may have been evicted. They don't know where they're going to sleep that night. Can you imagine? Can you imagine getting up, having to go to school, not really having a home to go to at the end of the day?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
Thank you. To the Board, I just appreciate the work that you're doing. I know that during the course between the last time we voted for this issue, that there certainly had been a lot going on within the school system, and that you've been working really hard to ensure that you've improved systems within the system, within the public school system. You've added new committees, and I appreciate the work that you've been doing to show the voters in Columbus that they should have confidence in the work that you're doing. I do appreciate the work that you do to make sure that all of our children are having a preschool, increasing preschool education for our young people, and just appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the children of Columbus as well as the families of Columbus. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and this is a good opportunity to thank you all for the work that you do with us, especially as it pertains to pre-K. So, thank you very much for your efforts. And I should recognize my colleague, W. Shawna Gibbs, who has joined us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Baker. Before moving for adoption, I want to highlight the, to follow on President Pro Tem Tyson's comment, the really remarkable strides that you all have been a part of leading the district towards, having 91% of students pass their third-grade reading test two years in a row, and in the 2014-2015 school year, earning an A from the Ohio Department of Education for academic improvement. Those are just excellent marks, and thank you for the work you do with our excellent Rhonda Johnson to help make pre-K a reality for as many students as possible in our city. So, without further comment, I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Denziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you.
That's all I have, President Klein.
I have one announcement this evening. This Wednesday, September 21st, I will be conducting a Public Safety Committee hearing on the Columbus Division of Police Body, Worn, Camera Policy and Implementation. The hearing will be held here in City Council chambers at 5:30. Speaker slips for public testimony will be accepted between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. I do have one resolution this evening, and I would like to ask Ms. Sherri Andrus and all of those who are with her to come down to the podium. And we have Resolution 0216X-2016 to commemorate the work of Sherri Andrus and to celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Columbus Schools Special Olympics Program. Sherri Andrus founded the Special Olympics Program within Columbus City Schools in November of 1985, and just a few months later, the program received national accreditation. Sherri was determined to create an athletic program that her son could participate in, and the original program began with six athletes and one sport. The current program has evolved to include over 800 athletes playing 11-year-round sports. The Columbus City Schools Board of Education recognizes the importance of the program and is recognized on a city-state, national, and world level. Hundreds of athletes, parents, volunteers have been impacted by Sherri's dedication to the Special Olympics Program. And on behalf of the citizens of Columbus, we commend Sherri for her hard work, commitment, and service to the community. Be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby congratulate Sherri Andrus on her contributions to making the city of Columbus the best place to live, work, and raise a family. I would now like to move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Denziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And Sherri, I would now like to give you the opportunity to speak and introduce your guests.
Thank you for this recognition. It really is an honor to be here and to recognize me as to honor the program that I'm so proud of. With me is my son, Jason, who definitely was the inspiration 30 years ago when he was only eight years old, and he's still very active in the program and is 39. So, Jason has attended at all levels, including World Games, when he went to Dublin, Ireland in 2003 and competed as the only Ohio swimmer that was chosen to attend, and came back with two gold medals and a silver medal. So, what I do is... What started as something out of my house, and I volunteered for three and a half years, developed into a wonderful program that a former Columbus Board of Education member who's in the room presented before the Board to create a position because the program was only going to continue to grow. I didn't know how much it was going to grow. I only knew it was something that needed to be provided for the students in Columbus City Schools. So, everybody that knows me, I don't consider this a job. It's a passion, and I'm as passionate about the program 30 years later as I was when I first started it. So, thank you very much, again, for honoring the Special Olympics Program this evening. Jason, do you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you for inviting me and my mom talking about Special Olympics. O-H.
Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? President Klein?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. I just have to ask Jason if it's okay, Jason. I'll never have a chance to compete in an Olympics, so you've got to tell me what it's like to actually compete in the Olympics.
It's fine. I got to play with my peers, and all my coaches been training me to be involved in the last 30 years, and I just enjoy every little bit of it because this is my passion. This is my life. And when I went to 2003 in Dublin, Ireland, the men's swim team, Ohio State, trained me.
Wow. And what events did you swim in?
In swimming, I swam, I was a part of the relay team, and I did 100 backstroke and the 50 freestyle.
That's awesome, man. Congratulations. Way to represent us. That's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. At this time, I'd like to invite Senior Visitor Experience Manager of Experience Columbus, Robbie Banks, and some of her fellow CTAs to please come forward to the podium as I introduce Resolution 223X-2016 to recognize and celebrate the Greater Columbus Tourism Ambassador Program and its contributions to the city of Columbus. As they make their way up, or mate, it's just Robbie, and there's the rest of the group. The Greater Columbus Tourism Ambassador Program, also known as CTA, was founded to create a culture of service and foster a welcoming climate for visitors and residents of the city of Columbus. It provides knowledge about our city and its attractions, history, popular events, in order to engage visitors and promote tourism here in Columbus to the tune of hosting 37.6 million visitors who spend over $5.7 billion annually. As the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program nationally celebrates its 10th anniversary in the United States this year, the Greater Columbus Tourism Ambassador Program has quickly become one of the premier chapters in the country. Not only was Columbus the fastest city to certify 1,000 CTAs, our local chapter is the largest in the country with more than 3,000 CTAs having been certified since January of 2013, with such distinguished CTAs as a number of our council staff and Councilmember Shannon Harden. We are very proud to be displaying our pens today in order to help present this resolution to the Greater Columbus Tourism Program. And now, I'll ask my colleagues if there's any questions or comments, or if you're looking for a good restaurant or a neat place to shop, these are some of the folks that can help. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Denziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Robbie, podium is all yours.
Thank you, Councilmembers Denziano and President Klein and members of council. We are very honored, on behalf of the Greater Columbus Sports Commission and Experience Columbus, to be acknowledged for not only our local Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, but the national program that celebrates its 10th anniversary. It's now in not only the U.S., but in Bermuda, 18 states and in Bermuda, so it's international now. And we are very, very proud to be the number one, the largest program in the country. And I think that's because of our wonderful residents having a great sense of pride coming off our bison tenure year in 2012. We launched this program when, you know, the community was really excited about how to get involved in improving the visitor experience, how they can get involved, and many of you and your staff have done so, and we certainly invite the rest of you from council and your team and all the residents that want to make a difference in improving the visitor experience for Columbus so that visitors come here, spend money, tell people what a great place we have here, and can't wait to return. So, thank you very much for the honor, and we hope to see you in some classes soon.
Next, I would like to take a minute to announce that today is the official launch of the Day for Democracy, a program that engages businesses, nonprofits, and other organizations to help recruit poll workers ahead of the 2016 presidential general election in November. I had the honor and pleasure of participating in the official launch at Nationwide with Congresswoman Joyce Beatty and Ohio Secretary of State John Husted, as well as leaders from founding Day for Democracy partners Nationwide and American Electric Power. As we all know, poll workers serve as ambassadors of our democratic process, so it's essential we employ capable, energized, and qualified candidates to work the polls. This statewide program partners with private companies by distributing information to their members and employees and how they can dedicate a Day for Democracy by choosing to become a poll worker for Election Day. Now, having served as a poll worker on numerous elections, I encourage all citizens to take the time as it's a fantastic way to be part of the democratic process and serve our community. So, get registered or update your voting address, and then, please, take the time and sign up to be a poll worker. We know Ohio will be nationally recognized as a key battleground state, and our polling locations need to be appropriately staffed to ensure a seamless Election Day. So, I encourage businesses and individuals seeking more information on becoming a partner in Ohio's Day for Democracy program, visit www-DayforDemocracy.com. President Klein, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, President Klein. I have one resolution, and I'm going to ask if Mr. Kelly Regan, Bill Burns, John King, Darryl Stewart, and Terrell Spencer will all walk to the podium, and also, if Kelly, if your family wants to walk, come to the podium too, they certainly can. I have Resolution Number 0220X-2016. It is to congratulate the Fleet Administrator, Kelly Regan, on being named as the Public Fleet Manager of the Year, and to acknowledge the employees of the City of Columbus Division of Fleet Management for receiving the 2016 Number One Leading Fleets in America Award. Whereas the Leading Fleets Award, sponsored by Ford, recognizes public fleet operations that demonstrate innovative leadership, operational efficiency, a vision for the future, and fleet operations which have successfully overcome challenges. Whereas the award, which is open to public fleet operations in the United States and Canada, is judged by five industry professionals. And whereas the Columbus Division of Fleet Management, under the leadership of the 2015 National Fleet Manager Hall of Fame inductee, Columbus Fleet Administrator, Kelly Regan, Operations Manager, Bill Burns, John King, and Assistant Operations Manager, Darryl Stewart, and others have been named as the Number One Overall Fleet, as well as the Number One Large Fleet for fleets of more than 1,000 assets. Columbus has a fleet size which totals more than 6,400 units. Whereas, since Kelly Regan's hiring in 2007, the Columbus Division of Fleet Management have received every Number One ranking that's currently available in the automotive public fleet industry. This includes the Number One 100 Best Fleets in North America, which it received in 2014, beating out 38,000 public fleets from across the nation, the first place from the Government Green Fleet Award in 2014. Green Fleet Award in 2011, the Clean Fuels Ohio Champions Award for 2009 and 2011, and most recently, the Number One Leading Fleets in America and Public Fleet Manager of the Year of 2016. And whereas the City of Columbus Division of Fleet Management innovative pursuit of excellence has not only helped to save our taxpayers' money, but have allowed the division to enjoy the distinction of being ranked among the top 10 for the Best 100 Program for the last seven years and the top 10 for Leading Fleets. And whereas the City of Columbus Division of Fleet Management employees have also received the Automatic Service Excellence ASE Blue Seal for the ninth year in a row in 2016, thus remaining the largest municipality to hold this prestigious recognition. And whereas the City of Columbus Division of Fleet Management employees have demonstrated through achievements such as these, that they are one of, if not, the best-run public-sector fleet in North America and is recognized as a pioneer in the industry for its use of safe, cost-effective, and environmentally preferred compressed natural gas, its building of fueling infrastructure, its purchase of vehicles dedicated to CNG, and its current electrical vehicles and infrastructure implementation through winning the Smart Cities Grant. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Columbus, at this council, does hereby recognize and congratulate Fleet Manager Kelly Regan on being named as the Public Fleet Administrator, Manager of the Year, and acknowledge and thank the employees of the City of Columbus Division of Fleet Management for receiving the 2016 Number One Leading Fleets in America. I first move to amend that submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and I move for adoption.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Kelly, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Protam Tyson. Thank you, President Klein. Thank you, council members. What an honor it is to stand up here. And none of these things could be done without incredible people working in fleet. And I, we have the best management team in the country. I believe that. Bill Burns, our Fleet Operations Manager. We have John King, our Fleet Operations Manager over here to my right, Darrell Stewart, Assistant Operations Manager, Jimmy Nichols, our Supervisor at Morris Road, and then Terrell Spencer, our Safety Manager, keeps us safe every day. We have a mantra that our employees are sent to work with all of their fingers and toes, and we want to send them home in the same condition. Isn't that right, Terrell?
That's correct.
And that's our hope, that's our hope and our prayer. We couldn't do it without your support. We are really, have become a gorilla in the industry, a leader in the industry, and from all of us as a management group, thank you for your support. Thank you for your trust in us from a sustainability standpoint. Thank you for all of the things that you have done for us. Our Director, Director Lombardi, sitting here behind me. We couldn't do it without Director Lombardi, Deputy Director Kathy Owens. Full support of council of our elected officials and our administration allows us to get there. We are an ASE Blue Seal shop, and that means that a lot of guys work really hard through training and certifications every year, and we thank you for that. Without your help, without your financial support, we wouldn't be able to do that. That means that they're better at the jobs that they do on the floor, and that means that we save money for our taxpayers. So, ASE Blue Seal for the ninth year in a row. Our CNG initiative continues to grow with almost 24 million invested in it. When folks want to know how to do CNG and do it right, guess who they call? Columbus. And we help them. We extend, and we probably help no less than a half a dozen to a dozen cities in building infrastructure, and we're helping OSU at this time. We have won the Smart Cities Grant. This is something we haven't touched is electrical vehicles. Now we're going to be diving into it face-first, and we're going to do great things with this. And again, we'll be pioneering. We'll be the leader. But the men and the women of fleet make us number one because of the men and women in fleet that work so hard, that are dedicated to their vocations, that do exceptional work like the one standing here in front of you. And lest I forget, my wife of 35 years, Rebecca's put up with me. One of the council members said, you, to her, you deserve a sainthood. Maybe it was my director that said that, for putting up with me for 35 years. But again, thank you for all of your support, and you help us shine, and you help us teach others how to do things and do them well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Protam. Kelly knows I could not let him go without taking a moment to say how really and truly special he is. We started to work together a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
And the watchword for our fleet manager has always been innovation. How do we make things better? How do we figure out how to enhance the way in which our personnel, all the employees of the City of Columbus are able to get their jobs done? They need vehicles to do that, and Kelly's staff and himself have always been willing to look at new ways on how to get that job done. Cal, nobody else deserves this award better than you do. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, and again, Rebecca, thank you for being here. I think your daughter is out and the, thank you for being here. And just Kelly, again, thank you, and just appreciate you and every single person that's working with you and your team. If you haven't had an opportunity to go out and tour fleet, go out and see the facility. It's pretty amazing what they're doing there. So, again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I have just a few announcements on tomorrow. On Tuesday, I will have a hearing at 5:00 to review the legislation that will be in my committees over the next two weeks that will be on the council floor. Also, and I'll let her speak on this, but our Assistant Health Commissioner is also, the Health Department's having a hearing tomorrow, and I'm going to ask Nancy Bechtel to just let people know about this hearing that we'll be having from the Board of Health.
Thank you, Councilwoman Klein, Councilwoman Protam Tyson. So, the Board of Health will be having its hearing tomorrow about its domestic farm animal regulations, and the Health Department's been working on this for a while, since 2015. This legislation that our Board of Health will be hearing came about from over 100 complaints that the city received from neighbors and neighborhoods about people that were keeping domestic animals. And so, the work that the Health Department has done is really to put together proposed legislation that will make sure that residents feel safe when neighbors are keeping farm animals. It's not to be punitive in any way. It's really just to make sure that people feel safe when neighbors have animals, especially about waste management and those types of concerns that sometimes come up when people have animals. And it's, we've gotten attention about chickens, but it's not just about chickens. It includes people that are keeping alpaca, bison, camel, caribou, cattle, deer, elk, goat, horse, llama, moose, mules, ox, pigs, ponies, reindeers, sheep, water buffalo, and birds besides chickens. So, it's really to try and make sure that everybody is safe in the city of Columbus when we have residents keeping these type of animals on their property.
Thank you. What time is the hearing tomorrow?
2:00 P.M. is our Board of Health meeting.
Thank you.
And I would just say that we've, this has been on our website. Again, we started working on this last year. People can find information about it at www-publichealth.columbus.gov under Animal Permits, and our Board of Health agenda is online at http://columbus.gov-publichealth/ About Columbus Board of Health.
Thank you. And so, this issue will not be coming to this body. Is that correct?
The way the health code is, the Board of Health sets the health code, and they'll be very carefully hearing the legislation that's being proposed tomorrow.
Thank you. I want to recognize that you certainly have a member of the Board of Health in council chambers.
We do.
Karen Morrison is in chambers this evening, and certainly this is an issue that's been brought to this council, to this body, and certainly I want to make sure that, I know my office and our council has gotten calls, and Councilmember Elizabeth Brown's office, and so certainly want to make sure that the viewing and listening audience knows that there'll be a hearing tomorrow at 2:00, and that the Board of Health will be happy to hear all their concerns about the changes that you want to enact.
Thank you.
Then I also just want to make a comment on, just on voting, and that I want to note that the early voting for the November general election begins on October the 12th, and I encourage that all Columbus and Franklin County residents to register to vote and to verify your current registration so you, so that you can make your voice heard at the ballot box. I also think it's really important that sometimes some of the individuals who have come back to this community, or we call reentry, or ex-offenders, understand that they do have a right to vote. And a person convicted of a misdemeanor of any degree at any time who meets the qualifications may claim his or her rights as an eligible voter in Ohio. Additionally, a person who has been convicted of a felony but not currently incarcerated may vote if he or she is otherwise eligible to vote in Ohio. If a person has served time in jail or prison for a felony conviction and has been released, even on a post-release control, parole, or in a house arrest or halfway house, he or she is eligible to vote. So, please note, a person released from prison is required to register again at his or her next residence after release. And so, I'm hoping that, again, we just want to remind individuals that your voice needs to be heard. We want to hear it, and people have certainly died for you to have the opportunity to vote. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Protam Tyson. We do have a presentation from an area commissioner, but before we do that, I'd like, if it's okay with you, Councilmember Mitch Brown, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, give Director Pettis the opportunity to offer any updated remarks to this council body and the public on the most recent police-involved shooting, as well as an update on the investigatory response. Before Director Pettis speaks, would you like to say anything, Councilmember Mitch Brown?
No, that'd be absolutely fine. I've had a conversation with the Director, and I'm certainly prepared to respond to this body and to the viewing public on the process when there is a police officer-involved shooting that results in a fatality.
Director Pettis.
Thank you, President Klein, Public Safety Chair Brown, members of council. All Columbus police-involved shootings toward a suspect are treated as a criminal investigation. Ohio law requires criminal investigations to be conducted by sworn law enforcement personnel with the authority and jurisdiction to conduct criminal investigations. Following any police-involved shooting, a public information officer personally responds to the scene regardless of the time of day. A preliminary statement is provided on camera from the scene to all media persons present. Within hours, a formal written press release is distributed to an extensive listing of journalists, and generally, within 24 to 48 hours of the incident, the name or names of the officers involved are publicly released. The Columbus Division of Police uses a team of highly-trained and experienced investigators from their Critical Incident Response Team, or CIRC team, to conduct the criminal investigations. This team completes the investigation, which is then reviewed for thoroughness and clarity by the homicide section lieutenant and the crimes against persons commander. The county coroner, an elected official, rules on the causes of death, has subpoena powers, and has the authority and discretion to hold inquisitions should the coroner decide to do so. Since 1980, all incidents that result in a fatality are then submitted to an elected official, the county prosecutor, who independently reviews and presents the investigation and witnesses to a civilian grand jury. This is not mandated by law, but is a best practice we and the county prosecutor have agreed to. If the civilian grand jury concludes the officer is not to be charged with a crime and/or following any subsequent criminal proceedings involving the subject officers may have shot, the investigation is sent to the Division's Firearms and Police Involved Death Review Board, consisting of three police commanders. The Division's Firearms and Police Involved Death Review Board reads and reviews the investigation, and if necessary, may consult with the investigators for further information. The board makes a recommendation of finding based on division policy. After that review, the investigative package is sent to the involved officer's chain of command for another review and their recommendations. If all parties are in agreement that the officer followed policy, a deputy chief may make the ruling and the investigation is concluded. If there is disagreement in the board and/or between the board and the employee's deputy chief, the investigation is sent to the chief of police for a final ruling. Personnel found to be in violation of policy normally are disciplined by the chief and/or the Director of Public Safety. And so, the investigation is ongoing and is within that process.
Thank you, Director Pettis. Do you have any comments or questions, Chairman of Public Safety, Mitch Brown? I know you've sat in that chair, you've been part of this process, now you're a member of the legislative body. Certainly welcome your unique insight.
My comments to my colleagues and to you, Council President, and to the viewing public is that whenever we have a fatality, obviously, our feelings and sadness goes out to the family and those who are involved. Any shooting that results in a fatality is very, very serious. It's important for the community to understand that our police division, that this process works, given an opportunity to work. We will respond, or they will respond appropriately, and explain the circumstances. Failure to do so is not being equitable in the circumstances. We have a young man who has been killed. Let's let the circumstances play themselves out. I have the confidence in the Columbus Division of Police that if there is wrongdoing, it will be addressed. But if there is not wrongdoing, we need to be aware and understand that process as well. Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Shannon Harden?
Thank you, President Klein. Just wanted to share my appreciation for you, Director Pettis. I know you've been on the job now for six weeks, and even though you have had a long career here in the city of Columbus, an instance like we experienced last week, it is harrowing. It's sobering for all of us, and your leadership along with Chief Jacobs, the mayor, Councilmember Brown, has, I really appreciate it. And really, I appreciated the community this week. In other cities, when they've had instances like we've experienced, they've responded in different ways. Our city has responded in a different way. We have been upfront. We've had conversations with communities. You've been out there. I've been with you, and I just really appreciate the process so far. And so, thank you for your leadership, and that's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? President Protam Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein. I too, I have to thank now my council colleague, Mitchell Brown, for being a safety director for so many years, and certainly helping to put together kind of the plan that we have today with the previous police chiefs to ensure that, hope of this situation would never happen in our community, but all the work that's been done within this community to build trust with the, with the community, and to have programs and training, not only for our police officers, but for our community. I think about the ABCs of policing and how so many of our community leaders have been a part of that, to be able to understand the process, hoping that something like this would never happen in our community, but that, but again, to understand our process and to have the trust in our community. From your department to thinking about the, the office that now Director Colleen Williams-Scott has through the Community Relations Department, there's a number, we've done a lot in this community to garner, I think, the respect from the residents to be able to say, we want to let this process play itself out. And so, I do appreciate the work of And so I do appreciate the work of the administration, but certainly, Councilmember Brown, for the work that you, you did here for the city of Columbus. So thank you.
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
I want to echo my colleagues' thanks for those who are turning their attention to this situation. And I know how much Chief Jacobs has focused on the community policing side of what our police force does, and thank you, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I do want to ask, if I'm allowed, if we could have a moment of silence for this boy, for Tyree King? Am I allowed to do that?
The floor is yours, Councilmember Brown.
Because it is so tragic to lose a life in this city, as our, as our mayor, I think, said very, very well last week. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence.
Any other questions or comments? I know I appreciate that, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, I certainly thought about the young man, his family, as well as the police officer involved in the shooting as well, and the difficult circumstances that anyone finds himself in, police officer or otherwise, having to take someone's life. And I, my thoughts and prayers go out to everyone involved. Director Pettis, thank you for your comments. Councilmember Brown, Mitch, thank you for your comments. And seeing no other commentary on this situation, I'd like to invite up the chairperson of the Far East Area Commission. And that's Jennifer Chamberlain, for a presentation. This is something that this council has instituted since we constituted as a body in January of this year, inviting area commission presidents and members down to give us an update on what's going on in your neck of the woods.
Okay.
Welcome to council.
I'm going to be brief. I have a child at home waiting to go to volleyball practice. So, I'd like to say thank you for having me here, Council President and City Council. As you all probably know, we work pretty closely with the Greater Southeast Area Commission and with the MAC. A lot of our meetings are all held together. The leaders of those organizations, we, we talk frequently. And we are always striving to bring as much of the community out before you when you arrive in our area. The latest one was the recent bond package at the Barnett Center. So, a couple things that we have been working on. I don't know if you're aware, we finally had all five of our bicentennial signs put in place, so that's done, we're pretty happy about that. At the beginning of the year, we applied for a pretty extensive OCJS grant with Bridging the Gap and Larry Wilson, and it was a mentoring-based program. We pretty much spent two months working on that. We didn't end up getting it, but it was something that we thought was important enough to make that big of a push for. Also, we had a meeting early on with various eastside community leaders, and United Way was present. The discussion led to what we feel is a crisis with our young generation. The concern was from a generation of kids that we found that were being raised more now by grandparents than what has been in the past. Too many kids roaming the streets committing crimes within the neighborhoods, and the effects of juvenile detention on, on these youngsters. What was also troubling was when we looked at who was in the room discussing, discussing this at the time. They were mostly, the leaders were in their 50s on up. So, these leaders, they're working in many different aspects in the community. So they're, they're block watch coordinators, they lead mentoring and community programs, they're volunteers at local schools, on area commissions, it goes on and on and on. And why do we have a few people doing the work of what should be multiple, multiple people? So how do we bring a younger generation in to help our community, and how do we get them engaged? And how do we start to make leaders of them? How do we capacity build with civic commitments from our youth? And we are, we are struggling with this, to come up with answers, because it's directly affecting us. Members of the Far East Area Commission and the Far East Pride Center, we've recently been involved in multiple school and community safety programs. Recently, was at Woodcrest Elementary School. I would like to revisit with City Council the request to let our youth be more involved with City Council, so their voices are heard, so that they are important, and they are Lastly, the Far East Area Commission is thankful for the city's movement towards the 2015 Bryce-Tusing market study. We asked for it, and we are very happy to receive it. The area has suffered with poor planning coupled with inadequate transportation infrastructure, resulting in a big retail market loss in our area. Special thanks to Steve Lindsey and Jermaine Toyota. We now have an auto dealer showplace that's state-of-the-art. But our area right now is, is really fragile. With the loss of so much retail, it's hard to deny anyone willing to turn over empty lots and structures. However, there are some uses being permitted that are not acceptable, and are further unsupported by the market study. The commission has the responsibility to help bring this area out of its devastating state and revive it. That's something we've been working on for three years, since we began the area commission. An ongoing struggle with the commission in the area is Green Earth, and finding fault with a business that has repeatedly been asked to show some movement towards compliance and community concern. In November of 2014, the area commission overwhelmingly voted no for rezoning, which City Council overruled us on. Green Earth recently became, came before us for a special use permit to operate a salvage yard, which everybody's been expecting. With an area desperately struggling to hold on to what little retail we have, to put a junkyard in with heavy industrial operations would pretty much be a nail in our coffin. And looking at the market retail study and not finding this as an acceptable use, I would hope that City Council will accept the recommendations of the area commission and its own study for the area, and turn down the upcoming application for the questionable business. We acknowledge the I-70 Bryce Road as a gateway to the community, and we need to keep it that way. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Chairperson Chamberlain? I know she has a volleyball game, is that what you said? Make sure you get to the...
Practice.
Volleyball practice? Are you the coach?
No.
Oh.
Transportation person.
Transportation, yes, I get that. Any questions or comments? I appreciate your honesty and candor, certainly your civic participation. I know that you don't do it for the great pay and travel, but you do it for the love of your community, and we're grateful for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from our elected officials? Auditor Dorian, the Treasurer's Office, the City Attorney's Office? I don't see any, any members of the judiciary here. Are there any other requests by members of council? Are there any requests at all for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Hardin, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of the 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 2090-2016. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 2219-2221-2016. Technology Committee, ordinance 2083-2016. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2229 and 2239-2016. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 2188-2016.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 217X and 224X-2016. Finance Committee, ordinance is 2176, 2195, 2201, 2274, 2303-2016. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 2076, 2211, 2220-2016. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 2092-2016. Environment Committee, ordinance is 2210, 2213, 2217-2016. Administration Committee, ordinance 2070-2016. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 2150-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 1252, 2093, 2120, 2157, 2168, 2199, 2225-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2108 and 2183-2016. Housing Committee, ordinance is 2271, 2272, 2276, 2280-2016. Technology Committee, ordinance is 1959, 2081, 2104, 2177-2016. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1943, 1952, 1955, 1958, 2001, 2002, 2005, 2006, 2027, 2029, 2044, 2046, 2050, 2063, 2114, 2117-2016. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 2134 and 2136-2016. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0138, 139, 140, 141, 154, 155, 156, 157, and 158-2016. Just for, just to be on the safe side for the record, my staff and my council president say I may have missed one. Which one would that be, a pardon?
Just your staff.
Just my staff. Well, I trust them. Okay, that is 2124-2016, and that is in Public Utilities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, clerk. We do have one consent speaker, it's Nathaniel Wilkins, speaking on 2276-2016. Mr. Wilkins? This is in Housing. Welcome back to council, you have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, also the chairman of some vacant and empty property in North Linden area. I would just like to know, 2221 Grassmere Avenue, how long it's been in the land bank, and what would this property be used for? I'm only for this if a resident can be there for 10 years. Thank you for your time.
So on 2276-2016, Director Shoney, if you could follow up with Mr. Wilkins on his questions about that particular parcel? Any other questions or comments about the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Hardin, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Consent portion carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled in emergency legislation. The first committee is Finance, it's chaired by President Protem Tyson. Councilmember President Protem Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 0204X-2016, which is to accept the amounts and the rates by Franklin County Budget Commission for the city's tax budget for 2017, and to declare an emergency. This, this resolution accepts the rates by the Franklin County Budget Commission associated with the levying of property taxes for various purposes. While this resolution and the companion piece, which was 134X-2016, which we approved on the, on June 27th, are relatively pro forma, the approval of these resolutions is a statutory requirement in order for the city to receive the shared revenue via the state's local government fund, which is more than, which more than $20 million in the 2016 budget. I would ask if Auditor Dorian wants to make any other comments about this legislation, about this ordinance?
Thank you, Chairperson Tyson. This is an annual ordinance where the county auditor's office asks us to confirm the data that we mailed to them in the tax budget, in respect that we will not ask for a property tax increase for next year. So we're confirming the fact that we're not asking for a property tax.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. And with that, I move to accept the resolution 0204X.
Brown, Brown, Hardin, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ord, the ordinance I will read is 1942-2016, is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to modify an existing contract with KNS Services, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $60,000 from a previously established auditor certificate, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code 329. On behalf of the Facilities Management Division, this is to modify the existing contract with KNS Services, Inc., for security communication system upgrades, including the installation of a new bidirectional amplifier system for the City Hall Municipal Campus Security Communication System, Communication System. And Director, can you please share why we are asking to waive competitive bidding?
Sure. Thank you, President Klein, President Protem Tyson. We continue to try to standardize all of our security at all of our buildings with the Facilities Management Division. As you recall, we passed ordinance, or you passed ordinance, 1871-2016, which will give upgrades to the municipal court building, putting them on KNS's services. They are the security company of record for our facilities, and so any upgrades, any of the new software upgrades that we would need would only have to be through them, so there was, there's no potential of having a competitive bid in this situation. These amplifiers will allow for the, the software to find wireless communications during an emergency situation, and amplify that so that there is, it does not impede any of the two-way communication we may have during an emergency situation at all of our buildings.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I move passage.
Brown, Brown, Hardin, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. I have one ordinance, it's ordinance 2231-2016, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a, into a grant agreement with the Lutheran Social Services to provide funding for the renovation of real property located at 217 North Grant Avenue, to authorize the Director of Development to expend $2 million from the Housing Preservation Fund, and to declare an emergency. Last year, the city assisted the Lutheran Social Services in the acquisition of the building at 217 North Grant with $1 million in funding. This 40,000-square-foot building is adjacent to the Faith Mission's Operations Hub, which houses the following: the Community Kitchen, the Resource Center, the Health Clinics, and the Faith Mission Administrative Offices. And currently, LLS is renovating this building, thanks in large part to this $2 million support from the city of Columbus, should we say yes tonight. The plans for the building will house 110... The plans for the building will house 110 homeless men, relocating them from the Sixth Street Men Shelter; 45 homeless women relocating from our former women's shelter, Nancy's Place; 15 to 20 homeless veterans locating from the Eighth Street Avenue Shelter; and offices for supportive services for veterans and their families, and case managers for veterans and their families. The timeline will be, for the completion of this, would be December of 2016, and client relocation will begin in Jan, mid-January of 2017. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. The next committee is Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in economic development, we'll start with ordinance 2189-2016, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with U.S. Bank National Association, equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of up to five years, in consideration of investing approximately $265,000 related to leasehold improvements, retaining nine full-time permanent positions, and creating 60 new full-time permanent positions. Those jobs have an hourly wage of $29.65 per hour. Any questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you so much. Moving on, I'm going to go a little bit out of order here to do two ordinances that both relate to Ohio Health in a row. So we'll do 2200-2016 and then 2237-2016. Starting with 2200-2016, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive with Ohio Health Corporation and identified related entities, collectively Ohio Health, for a term of 10 years, in consideration of investing an estimated $89 million, retaining and relocating 1,222 full-time positions, relocating 155 full-time positions to the City of Columbus, and creating 1,156 new full-time positions. I want to pause here and first allow the Director Shoney to please give us any background on this, this, this ongoing conversation.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, members of council. We're very excited to bring both of these pieces of legislation before you today. The first piece is our jobs growth incentive package, that, our jobs growth incentive, tax incentive that will allow us to move forward with that piece. The second piece is our economic development agreement that will allow us to move forward in the broader context to achieve what we think is a fairly substantial transformation of this piece of property, and we hope what will be the catalyst for more development in the area surrounding this. There, there isn't much about this project that isn't big. It is taking Ohio Health operations that are currently located in downtown Columbus, moving those to what most folks will think of as the Coles site. It's actually north of Coles at Olentangie River Road and North Broadway. And constructing, they will be there constructing a new administrative operations center that will bring, as you outlined, over 2,500 people to the corridor. There's a lot of work that has to go with that in terms of road infrastructure. We're partnering with our, our colleagues at the Ohio Department of Transportation and certainly at the City Department of Public Service to make sure that we achieve this, this creation of a new job center and expansion of a job center at the same time that the road network is actually improved for all in the, in the area, both the neighbors in Clintonville and to the north and to the south, but also, very importantly to us and Ohio Health, those who are going to Riverside Methodist Hospital and the surrounding medical facilities there. So it's going to be a big project. It's going to be a very exciting project. There are a few things that we're doing that are different in this project. One is, you may notice as you look at the jobs growth incentive, that we are offering a differential rate for new Ohio Health employees that live in the city and those that live out of the city. This is something new that we're, this is the first time, I think, we've brought legislation to council with this. This is something you will be seeing more of. It is something this administration believes in, in terms of finding ways to encourage employers to employ more city residents. The other thing that is unique about this deal, about this project and this, this deal that we're doing with Ohio Health, is that Ohio Health has committed to making a very substantial investment in the community. And with your indulgence, I'd like to bring Shawna Davis from Ohio Health to the podium to talk a little bit more about what they're going to be doing on this, if that's okay with you.
Yep, absolutely. And as, as you make your way to the microphone, come up, come up. I do want to highlight, and thank you for being here. I know there are several, several people from Ohio Health, so thank you for taking the time to come here. I want to highlight that President Klein is a cosponsor of this and had a, a lot to do with getting such an excellent economic development agreement put together. And I see Councilmember Brown has...
Just a question. Director Shoney, could you elaborate when it says relocating 155 full-time positions to the City of Columbus? Exactly what does that mean?
So what that means is there, Ohio Health does have some operations in a couple of other suburbs around the city. Those will be moving into Columbus, consistent with our policy on how we deal with our suburban partners with the movement of jobs. Those jobs will not be incentivized under our jobs growth incentive. So that's why we call those out as a special category.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, please. Oh, more, yes.
She talked about the community benefit, maybe, and maybe this is going to be a part of our presentation, but just talk a little bit about the 1,556 new full-time jobs are coming to, well, to Ohio Health.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Klein, members of council. The, the opportunity here is that Ohio Health has a tremendous history of growth, and I'm sure Ms. Davis can cover me on the statistics on this, and I'll ask her to do that. When you look at their history over the last 10 years, 10 years ago, they were a small regional hospital system. Now they are increasingly becoming a large statewide healthcare complex. And this growth in jobs will be on their administrative side. We anticipate there will also be some specialized clinical operations coming to the corridor. We see this really as being a center for Ohio Health's total operation, both administratively and for some of their specialized medical.
Great. Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Council President Klein and Development Director Brown. Ohio Health is a non-for-profit, faith-based healthcare organization with the mission to improve the health of those we serve. And our community outreach efforts is our mission and action. That is why we take great pride in partnering with the City of Columbus on our community commitment. We have committed to invest $7.3 million over the next five years on community-based health and wellness programs that are focused in the following areas: prenatal care and women's health services, health literacy, mobile primary care access, and substance abuse prevention and treatment services. Specifically on the substance abuse prevention and treatment services, Riverside maternal fetal medicine program in partnership with the Riverside Family Practice will establish a medication-assisted treatment clinic. This program will provide behavioral therapy, medication treatment, to pregnant women, allowing them to receive prenatal care, healthy, delivery of healthy babies, and receive specialized care related to their substance abuse disorder. We are also going to provide support, enhanced community-wide prevention and treatment services. This will be through partnerships with our clinical experts and other community partners focused on substance abuse treatment and prevention. Ohio Health applauds the City of Columbus, Council President Klein, and the other members of council for their focus on improving the health and wellness of citizens throughout central Ohio, and for allowing Ohio Health to continue to fulfill our charitable mission of improving the health of those we serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davis.
May I chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I appreciate your comments, and I just want to acknowledge the fact of the partnership that the City of Columbus has with a community player and friend like Ohio Health. And knowing that outside this major economic investment of 1,300 new jobs to the City of Columbus and what that means for economic upward mobility to many people that are going to be hired, hopefully with the new incentive that Director Shoney outlined for Columbus residents, but people in the city's region, which is equally as important, is a tremendous thing for economic upward mobility. With that said, I'm particularly proud of this investment that Ohio Health is making in substance abuse. As this council has noted, and the administration has noted, our police and fire personnel, specifically as it relates to opioid overdoses, and the Columbus Dispatch has done, started a series on this, we do five to seven runs a day, a day, in the City of Columbus administering Narcan to those who are on the verge of death due to an opioid overdose, primarily heroin. And right now, there is a dearth of services that are available to those unless you have $40,000 in private income to pay for a rehabilitation center. If you're like me and others, you don't have $40,000 in private income to pay for that. So we have to be more aggressive as a community in addressing this epidemic that has been plaguing our community now for a couple of years, but drug addiction overall has been plaguing our community now for decades. And it's unfortunate that it's taken this long to come to the boiling point that it is, but it is also fortunate enough that we have Ohio Health and other health systems of this council that are stepping up to the plate to make a difference. And by making this multimillion-dollar investment in substance abuse treatment, I think, is a tremendous step in the right direction. You think about the investment council made a couple of weeks ago with a local not-for-profit in opening an outpatient clinic on the Near East Side. Again, another step, that it's, the time for dialogue is over and the time for action is now. And thank you to Ohio Health for being a partner that wants to make a difference in the community, to bring lives to a better place, to, to bring families together, to help better our communities, because drug addiction is a community problem, and it's one that sees no race, class, religion, sexual orientation. But together, we got to tackle this. Appreciate Ohio Health's opportunity to partner with the city to make a difference in this field. And certainly to you, Director Shoney, and your, and your development team, in guiding the city through this major project that is going to be transformative on the 315 corridor. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Oh, I'm sorry. It's your, it's your, Jen. Any questions or comments? Okay.
No. Thank you, President Klein. I do want to commend you for the role you played in reaching this agreement, and specifically the focus that you brought on the drug addiction services in, in, in talking with, with Ohio Health. So are there comments and questions from others? It's my line.
Thank you, Chair Brown and Council President Klein. And I certainly would like to echo your appreciation for the partnership with Ohio Health. Looking over this package, which is quite extensive, you see the impact that this will have in our community. One of the, the benefits that I, that I saw as Chair of the Public Service and Transportation Committee on Council was the, the infrastructure improvements that are going to happen off of 315. I want to ask Director Shoney to, to talk a little bit more about the community, the community impact of the infrastructure improvements that this package brings.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden, President Klein, Madam Chair. We don't know exactly what the infrastructure improvements are going to be at this point. We're studying them right now. We've been working on that since, I think, probably about May, that we worked with Ohio Health, and Ohio Health has actually retained Burgess and Nyepal, and they're working through that process right now, along with our Public Service Department and ODOT. We don't know exactly what they're going to be. The goal is to provide direct access to the site, both northbound and southbound from 315, so that the traffic does not have to come in and get in the way of the hospital and folks going into the neighborhoods. That's the goal. It's a complex, anybody who knows anything about that interchange, it's a really complex interchange. And so, that's the technical term the engineers use with me. And it is going to take some study, and we're going to make sure that we understand what all the transportation impacts are. The other thing that's key about this is 315 is really an important workforce gateway for us. And when you look at the potential for growth at Ohio State, when you look at the potential for growth that Ohio Health has, and not only potential, what they're going to be doing, we really want to make sure we take care of 315 and make sure that when we locate something there, we're doing things that really have the road system accommodate that fantastic growth. And while I've got the microphone, I do also want to thank President Klein. I remember the first time that I brought up this potential project to President Klein and the potential for community investment, and he immediately went to drug and alcohol services and addiction treatment. And I think, I just want to personally thank you for your involvement and your guidance on this.
We have a question from Councilmember Brown.
Just one more question. Is Director Francis going to be involved in this whole process with regards to employees and minority community and others? I mean, we just heard something earlier today about 5,000 kids are homeless. I mean, and, and we're given, we're talking about $89 million over 10 years, and I get that, but we got to figure out how we can make sure that some folks have jobs, and that the folks who have jobs are job, people in the City of Columbus, so.
So, thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Klein, Chairwoman Brown. The, Director Francis is involved in all of our public works projects through the Department of Public Service, but I think in this project in particular, we have a great community partner that I think we'll have Director Francis working with to make sure that we do more and sort of set the standard in terms of outreach on this.
Thank you, because I'll be holding Director Francis accountable.
And who will hold me accountable, so that's good.
I know that.
Great. Are there any other questions? Ms. Davis, you can sit down. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I move for passage of ordinance 2200-2016.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is the companion piece, ordinance 2237-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement with Ohio Health to facilitate, facilitate the development of approximately 240,000 square feet of administrative office space and associated parking to be used by Ohio Health and promote further growth and expansion of Ohio Health's corporate and medical campuses. This is the, the EDA portion of the discussion that we just had. I assume there are no further questions.
Timeline.
What is the timeline?
I assume that was a question for me. The timeline, thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, the timeline is aggressive. Our friends from Ohio Health want to be starting construction coming this spring. They're in the process of hiring their design and construction team now. I would see, the goal is to have Phase 1 of this facility open, I think, in '19, but I would have to go, am I getting nods in the back? So that is the goal in terms of Phase 1, and then Phase 2 would follow soon thereafter.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 2208-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to apply for and accept a grant from the roadwork development account of the Ohio Development Services Agency valued at $1 million for costs associated with the completion of public roadwork improvements in the support of Big Lots Incorporated Corporate Headquarters Project, to authorize the repayment of any unused funds to the grantor per the terms of the grant, and to declare an emergency. Any questions from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 2277-2016, on which Councilmember Harden and Councilmember Stenziano are cosponsors. This ordinance is to authorize the Director of Development to amend the contract with Next Generation Development Corporation by extending the contract period to October 31st, 2017, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,250,000 from the 20- 31st, 2017, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,250,000 from the 2016 capital improvement budget and to declare an emergency. The Next Gen Development Corporation is charged with eliminating blight and creating job opportunities across our city in all neighborhoods. Ordinance 1929-2015, which was approved by this council on October 5th, author, of last year, authorized the Director of Development to enter into an agreement with Next Gen in the amount of $750,000 for the purpose of purchasing and acquiring key urban real property assets in targeted central city areas to advance industrial, economic, and commercial development in the City of Columbus. And this, this ordinance is relating to that. Do any of the cosponsors have comment? Or anyone else? With no comment, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in economic development. May I move to my one piece in administration? Thank you. That ordinance is 1632-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to contract with the United Way of Central Ohio for the purpose of providing coordination services for the City of Columbus 2016 Combined Charitable Campaign, to authorize the expenditure of $36,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund to waive competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code. Are there any questions from my colleagues about this ordinance? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation chaired by Councilmember Shannon Harden. Chair Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have 0202X-2016, to declare the city's necessity and intent to appropriate and accept certain fees, simple title, and lesser real estate in order to complete the citywide curb ramps public improvement project. Shrock Road and Agla Road on the far north side of Columbus, Ohio, the city has passed Ordinance 21-2016 to authorize the city attorney to acquire the real estate. The acquisition of this real estate will help make improvements and repairs to portions of Shrock Road and Agla Road, public roadways. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have Ordinance 1909-2016, to appropriate funds within the Hayton Run South Tiff, to authorize the transfer of funds from the Hayton Run Community Authority Assessments to the Hayton Run South Tiff Capital Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into agreement with the Franklin County Engineers' Office for the Riggins Road Part III and Hayton Run Boulevard Part II projects, to authorize the expenditure of funds from the Hayton Run South Tiff Capital Fund to pay these agreements and declare an emergency. The aforementioned effort is part of a larger project to construct a new roadway connecting intersections around Hayton Run Boulevard. Other planned improvements include a sidewalk, shared use path, and street lighting and trees. If there are no questions or comments about this project, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next, I have 2089-2016, to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate funds within the Street and Highway Improvement Fund, Fund 7766, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a construction agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., in connection with the Grandview Yard, Third Avenue Railroad Bridge, roadway improvements, Third Avenue Phase Two, Rails, Street Phase Three, and Fifth and Edge Hill Signal Improvement Project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,8,897 within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. This project, this project is, will, will help the railroads to do some general street and sidewalks repairs underneath the railroad overpass. We received many calls and conversations with folks about this project, and so we're excited to, to, to finally get this one going along. Councilmember Stenziano and other folks brought this to our attention and appreciated his leadership in, in conversation with the community on this. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have Ordinance 2131-2016, to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the city, within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the city attorney's office, Real Estate Division, to contract for professional services relative to the acquisition of fees, simple title, and lesser interest into, to property needed for the intersection improvements, Livingston Avenue at Barnett Road project, to authorize the city attorney's office, Real Estate Division, to negotiate with property owners to acquire the additional rights of ways necessary to complete this project and to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. This project will replace and upgrade existing traffic signals, additional, add additional turning lanes, sidewalks along Barnett Road, replace the storm sewer system, and addition to a dry detention basin, sidewalks are going to be a central part of a healthy community. And so we're going to really be excited about these improvements coming to Barnett and Livingston Avenue. This is just for the design portion of the project, so stick with this as we come back for construction sometime next year. President Protem Tyson.
Yes, Chairman Harden, certainly, these improvements are sorely needed on, on Barnett Road. And if you, I mean, it's close to our recreation facility, and people have to really just kind of walk in the street, the grass, to be able to walk during that corridor. So I'm glad, of course, this is right now just the initial phase of the project and look forward to the construction, but it's sorely needed in that stretch between Maine to Livingston and Barnett. So thank you for your leadership in making this happen.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. Are there any additional questions or comments on this ordinance? If not, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
And last, I have 2197-2016, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept title to certain fees, simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the arterial street rehabilitation, Allen Creek Drive, Freebis to Refugee Public Improvement Project, to authorize the city attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund pursuant to an existing auditor certificate and to declare an emergency. This is just repairs along the Allen Creek Drive between Freebis and, between Freebis and Refugee Road. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
That's, thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening. Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. The next committee is Recreation and Parks. Councilmember, Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. We have Ordinance 2173-2016, to authorize a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $14,260,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund to the Recreation and Parks Department for the operation of various grant programs administered by the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and to declare an emergency. And this is one of the ordinances that we do yearly, just to continue on with the various services that we provide for our aging residents here in Central Ohio. And the agencies that we will be appropriating the funds from are the Ohio Department of Aging, Franklin County Office on Aging Care Source, and United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage by voice.
Second. Ms. Brown, Mr. Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. The next committee is Public Utilities chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities, I bring forward Ordinance 2058-2016, to authorize the Director, Public Utilities, to enter into a professional engineering services agreement with CDM Smith, Inc., for the Sciota Main Sanitary Trunk Sewer Rehabilitation Project, to authorize the transfer within of $238,598 and the expenditure of up to $1,538,598 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend to the 2016 capital improvements budget. CDM Smith, Inc., a local Columbus company, will be assessing the existing structural integrity of the Sciota Main Sanitary Trunk Sewer to determine which repairs are necessary and to develop plans to complete these repairs. Rehabilitation is required to replace the corrosion protection barrier of the existing concrete pipe due to plastic linear that is deteriorating. The work will be done in the Green Lawn Frank Road Planning Area immediately upstream from the Jackson Pike Treatment Plant along the west side of I-71. The estimated timeline of this project is 5.5 years, ending hopefully just in time for Valentine's Day in February of 2022. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
There was. Thinking about Valentine's Day, yes.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
And next is Ordinance 2062-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering agreement with CHA Consulting, Inc., for the Mueller Street Overflow Interceptor Sewer Project, to authorize the transfer within of $251,584.61 and the expenditure of up to $1,751,584.61 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and to amend to the 2016 capital improvements budget. CHA Consulting, Inc., another local Columbus company, will provide engineering services during construction for the city's Mueller Street Overflow Sewer Project. The new sewerway will convey Mueller Street Regulator combined sewer overflows and Southside Interceptor Sewer wet, weather flows directly into the Oars Tunnel through Shaft Number Three. The design activities will begin this month with construction ongoing through 2020. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 2066-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of the Professional Construction and Management Services Agreement with URS Corporation, Ohio, for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $5,092,000 within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund and to authorize an amendment to the 2016 capital improvement budget. URS Corporation, Ohio, has been providing the city cost-effective services for maintenance of operations during construction for various capital improvement projects for the Division of Water since 2010, which is why I support the city's support to pass this agreement modification with them through 2017. This modification will provide professional construction management services for the following projects: the treatment capacity increase at the Dublin Road Water Treatment Plant, treatment improvements at the Hap Creamian Water Treatment Plant, Allen Creek Pump Station improvements, and treatment upgrades at the Parsons Avenue Water Treatment Plant. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
The next five ordinances will deal with preparing to implement the Blueprint Columbus Program across the city. As many of you know, our sanitary sewer system works well most of the time, but rainwater and snow melt can seep into the system and overload it. When this incurs, the amount of water entering the sanitary sewer system exceeds the system's capacity to hold it. The City of Columbus has developed a new approach to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows. So instead of simply storing excess water that seeps into the sanitary sewer system when rain falls and snow melts, Blueprint Columbus addresses the sources of those problems. I encourage all of those interested to visit the Blueprint Columbus section of the Department of Public Utilities website to learn more about the project. That website is www.columbus.gov backslash backslash blueprint. And with that, I'd bring forward Ordinance 2107-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an engineering agreement with Burgess and Niple, Inc., for the Blueprint Fifth Avenue by Northwest Sunrise Glen Integrated Solutions Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,043,247.72 in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and declare an emergency. The city's objective, again, is to reduce designed sewer relief overflows throughout the city's collection system, and with the help of Columbus Company Burgess and Niples, the city will evaluate and determine if this is best accomplished by limiting inflow and infiltration into sanitary sewers and constructing green infrastructure to retain and treat the resulting storm water in the Fifth by Northwest area. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 2110-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an engineering agreement with OHM Advisors for the Blueprint West Franklinton Yale Edwin Integrated Solutions Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,451,773.98 in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and declare an emergency. Similar to the last ordinance, the city will partner with another local Columbus company, OHM Advisors, to help determine the best way to reduce sewer overflows in the Franklinton and Hilltop areas. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 2115-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an engineering agreement with Corda Nemeth Engineering, Inc., for the Blueprint Hilltop Four Highland Harris Integrated Solutions Project, to authorize the transfer within of $826.80 and the expenditure of up to $2,826.80 and funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2016 capital improvements budget and declare an emergency. This is another ordinance, another Columbus company. Corda Nemeth Engineering, Inc., will be assisting the city to determine the best way to reduce sewer overflows in the Hilltop. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 2119-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an engineering agreement with Black and Vach Corporation for the Wastewater Treatment Facilities Upgrade, General Program Number Four. Overall Engineering Consulting Services, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. This contract will allow the Columbus Engineering Company to begin work on a six-year contract offering overall engineering consultant services on the Wastewater Treatment Facilities Upgrade, General Program Number Four. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Finally, we have Ordinance 2125-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an engineering agreement with EMHNT for the Blueprint West Franklinton Green Glenwood Integrated Solutions Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,559,705.20 in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and declare an emergency. This last ordinance in utilities tonight goes back to our blueprint plans to reduce sewer overflows. Columbus Company EMHNT will help develop plans for another section in the Fifth by Northwest area. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Mr. President, that's all we have in Public Utilities. If I can move on to Judiciary. First in Judiciary, we have Ordinance 2133-2016, to authorize the appropriation of $27,392.48 from the unappropriated balance of the Franklin County Municipal Court Judges' Probation Fee Fund. These funds were originally appropriated for a matching contribution for a grant. However, the grantor relieved the court of the match requirement, but the monies did not go back into the appropriated fund. Thus, the court seeks a reappropriation so the funds may be used. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Then I would like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
So moved.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
And now move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Finally, I'd like to bring forward Ordinance 2167-2016, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit known as Tyron Powell v. City of Columbus et al., pending in the Franklinton County Court of Common Pleas, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $200,000 in settlement of this lawsuit and declare an emergency. Mr. Powell's claim arises out of an auto accident with a Columbus Division of Fire vehicle that occurred back in December of 2013, in which Mr. Powell suffered injuries and incurred damages. I'll ask Josh Cox from the city attorney's office to discuss the settlement before we proceed.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. President Klein members of Congress.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano, President Klein, members of council. As you mentioned, this arises at a motor vehicle accident on December 26, 2013, at the intersection of Mooberry and Parsons. Involved a Division of Fire medic that was making a left turn off of Mooberry onto southbound Parsons, colliding with Mr. Powell's vehicle. The driver of the medic was cited for failure to yield on the left turn. And I should also mention that this was not an emergency run, so that immunity that would normally apply to Division of Fire did not apply here, so it's a strict negligence case. Mr. Powell suffered a broken leg and head contusion. The leg required surgical repair and physical therapy, and he also missed 12 weeks of work. In consultation with the Division of Fire and the Director's Office, the parties have reached agreement to settle this case for $200,000, and we would ask for council's approval.
I believe there's a question from Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Mr. Cox, do you know, and maybe the director knows, was there any discipline issued to the firefighter for his conduct in this accident?
I do not, no.
Director, could you find out and make sure this council is informed of the circumstances, please?
Councilmember Brown, President Klein, members of council, I'll check on that and report back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Past. I have no other ordinances from my committees, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. Any other business to come before council? We do have five non-agenda speakers, which we will take shortly after adjournment. Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Calderon.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned, and we'll take non-agenda items here in about 30 seconds.